It is 6:30. I'm the caller needing to order. Do I need to add, say that that's an addition?
When we get to pay orders, yeah.
When we get there, okay. So the agenda has no additions or deletions this evening?
No.
Good evening? Just pause for a second. I'll let select board member take his seat. Get back out.
My watch two minutes close. Oh, watch is low.
Okay. We just called the meeting to order. There are no additions or deletions. We're now at select board minutes for August 5th, 2024. Okay. Do I have a motion?
I got a question.
Oh, we need a motion first before the question. Then we can discuss.
Make your motion or go ahead.
Okay. Do your second. Okay, thank you. Question?
Yeah. The part about, down the second page near the top. Mr. Fort provided an overview of a memo submitted to the board members incorporating a viable heating and cooling plan as requested by Rob Barker. I don't remember doing it.
Don't remember requesting? Okay.
But maybe somebody does.
Which paragraph is that? Rob, which paragraph is that?
Top paragraph, second page.
Meeting member Tom Fort arrived with a discussion. Mr. Fort provided an overview of a memo submitted to the board members incorporating a viable heating and cooling plan as requested by Rob Barker.
So, yeah, so the, Rob, the prior select board meeting, prior to that one, you had made a comment, and I actually agreed with you, that you said rather than the energy committee coming to you and making, of course, you guys making a decision, you would have liked to have seen a viable plan.
Yeah. I did look in the minutes before that, and I didn't see anything about it, but that doesn't mean it didn't happen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, okay. I'm good with the way it is.
Thank you. Anything else? Not hearing anything. All those in favor accepting the minutes? Aye.
Aye.
And so approved. Great. Okay, well, we have Phil this evening?
We're gonna do pay orders first?
Pay orders, sorry. Let's do pay orders.
And Phil will not be here tonight.
Okay. We have an addition to the pay orders. Shannon Pitlick paid for the license for the movie rental out of her own pocket. So, that was $199.99.
That was, that was on there, I thought.
Making it $504.99. The new total for pay orders are $155,065.31. Do I have a motion?
Is this, is this it?
It has this addition on it if you want to see this.
Huh? This additional?
This.
Okay.
It's the $199, so it's $504, and this is our new total.
Okay.
Okay? Great. Do we have a motion?
I'm going to pay the pay orders.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other questions other than that addition? Okay. All those in favor of approving the pay orders?
Aye.
So moved? Okay. We will not have a road commissioner tonight? Um...
I did get a price from Rotten Regional Planning that they can do that for the grant.
So they can do it for the grant?
Yeah, so I'll have them maybe submit a written estimate for the next meeting.
Okay.
I did call, contact Alan May, and I asked who else, just so we get more than one, and he's like, okay.
Yeah. Yep. Okay. Any other questions on the REI grant award? Okay.
Well, we have to do, because you're saying that it's gonna be, it's such a hyper-specific thing to do, do we have to find other people for bids?
No.
Sandy, just stress that.
The purchasing policy...
I'm sorry, I was reading.
That's okay. The purchasing policy actually says on items 5,000 and up that the select board can waive
Okay.
waive it in the best interest of the town, and in this case, I just, I don't even know if there's anybody out there that would go and survey all of our roads.
We would have to introduce ourselves, look at everything.
And they already have it. I mean, they did it the last time.
Alan May doesn't think there's anyone else to do it.
No, 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 I, yeah.
They've already done it, and they have the base of having done it.
Right.
All the roads are, what the previous...
And they've also agreed to the price of the grant.
It's good.
Yes, then, that's all good. Okay. Roadside mowing status, I guess several people have asked about it.
Yes. His mower is slowed down, so, okay.
Then, oh, not the, not the brush hog, but the...
No, Phil Baker's.
Just his.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hopefully soon.
Okay.
Can we, the reason why we can't send the excavator out when it's under the roadside mowing?
I can ask somebody else.
Does that have a mower on it?
Well, it's got the brush hog on it, which also mows grass, so...
Right.
Yeah.
Why not? I mean, you don't have to mow brush all the time.
Yeah, this is for just the weeds, though. You need a real sick bar. I mean, that's...
Well, yeah, but he's...
Are you talking about that thing that goes like this and does the branches?
Yes. It'll mow grass, may not do a good job, but...
It'll take too long, too long.
It goes just as fast as a tractor does.
Not, not when you're going like this. You know, you...
But, but your hand...
It cuts this wide.
Yeah, but Phil only cuts four foot.
Well...
You know, so, but in a way, I mean, I was just curious.
Two foot.
I hate to sit around and wait all summer without...
I think, I think they'll probably come, but, uh, up on them.
Is there any, any roads that people brought up that were like, particularly like, we could do just one? West, though?
Phil, 140.
Okay.
I'm sure Hardscore Road.
East Street.
East Street, still. Always East Street.
Always East Street.
East Street, yeah.
I did hear from Eric Davenport, too, so...
Gotcha.
I just wonder if there's, if there is a high, like a high frequency of people calling saying, this is one place we know has to get done, then maybe we could do the brush hog, just try it out and see.
I'm sure Phil is aware of it.
Okay.
And under the gun about it, especially since, uh, we didn't pay him last year. You know, he said he's gonna do it for the same, and he knows it's on his list.
Yes.
I know, I know what it's like not, not to have too much time to do everything.
No, for sure. No, and I, I'm not trying to belittle his work, but even if it is a smaller swath that just cuts back a little bit, so there's a little bit of a shoulder.
And then it can be touched up later.
Right. He can still run it through, because he, like you're saying, it's gonna take longer if he has to go here and here on each little section of road.
If there's something we can do to help mitigate the complaints.
I don't see that thing being as a mower, really.
It's not, it won't be as effective, but can still do a decent enough job that maybe it'll take care of the complaint, and then it can be touched up when Phil has time. Be done.
Because we still have growing season, so it's still gonna come back up.
Yes, it's still gonna come up some. So if he can't, when he can get through and get to it, at least it'll be less.
It depends on, I don't know if they're still ditching or, I don't know if they're still ditching with the excavator.
I'm sure, I'm sure that they've got stuff to do, you know, and
It doesn't hurt us.
I just don't wanna see this repeating work, you know.
Right, but if this is gonna make it so that we have...
I'm saying let him complain. I mean, we're doing our best. We're doing our best.
Before we get off on the road commissioner, um... Oh, oops. Signs.
The signs.
The signs.
Thank you.
So...
I thought my head...
I thought all the flashing, all the signs in the whole state flashed when people were speeding.
I thought so, too, but apparently not.
I mean, they're called flashing radar signs.
They can only come on at, you're speeding, you're speeding.
Can the flash be turned off? Or doing...
Hell, the time given to that point.
No.
Yeah.
It's unbelievable.
We will have to order two batteries as a spare, because the batteries have to be fully charged, and the amount of sun that we've had lately, I'll never, you'll never get a fully charged battery, so...
Gotcha.
So was there another complaint about the signs and the flash?
Yeah, the state.
The state.
The V-Trans guy was driving through and he...
Drove through and said the flash.
He noticed when people were speeding, that he was thankful we turned off the messaging.
Yeah.
But when you speed, it blinked.
Oh, the light can't even split?
Doesn't everyone in the state do that?
It can only...
The sheriff's, though, the one in Cuttingsville that's put in there by the sheriffs, the mobile unit,
Yeah, yeah.
that flashes every time I drive by.
But that's a temporary mode. It probably doesn't fall underneath the...
I know, but they also have billboards when...
I know, but that, but that seems like the point of it is to also let you know that, oh, that is over what our limit is.
Well, that's the idea.
Would you even notice it if it didn't blink?
No.
No, you probably wouldn't process it.
It'd just be a regular sign. Notice it when it's blinking. That tells you that you're over the speed limit.
If it's not blinking, you're gonna drive by it like a regular speed sign does.
Well, I think it was a good idea.
We get two batteries, I can charge them.
All right. Okay.
Is there anything that we can do to either, is there like a tiny weather vane kind of little power thing that we could get that would keep them charged?
Well, wait. The problem is, is they want 13, I don't know, 13.8 volts. It's like full, full voltage to program. Well, they're never full voltage. They're always, you know, so they're always down. When I did it, I took a battery charger.
And hooked it up to it.
Hooked it up to the battery charger at the house.
Right.
Hooked my computer on and changed them.
Right.
So, but if I go back, we go back to the road crew and say, hey, can you take those down? They're gonna shoot us, so...
Right.
I say if we can get two batteries, I'll get them charged, I'll come out, take a stunt ladder and go see if we can try it one more time.
Yes, to see if we can figure it out.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mark.
It's, it's a bummer that you can't like download the code, do it on your laptop, and then re-upload the code. You have to be connected the entire time to be able to do it.
It's, it's, it's a, no, it's a simple thing.
I know, but it would just be the idea of like being able to just do it and then upload it when you're done versus having to, yeah. It's frustrating. It's a user, really bad user interface.
I mean, you go, yeah, you go through, you go through the whole thing, you get all done programming, you hit save. The thing dies at night, overnight, but it comes back on, charges it back in the morning, goes back to, back to reset. It's like, oh, oh, come on! So, we just unplug the slowdown sign. And then...
Oh, yeah, because if you don't put power to it, then you don't...
And I did get it to stay amber only.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I didn't really, I didn't, I thought they could flash. They're all, well, three of them are amber only, and they flash. The one on 140 West has pretty colors.
Yeah.
Does everything you want it to do.
Oh, it slows down every time.
That's okay. But, I mean, that's what they're supposed to look like.
Yeah, yeah.
But the rest of them are... So, if we can get two batteries and get them...
Okay, I got an up here.
Soon as they come in, charge them. I can probably do it on more charge. It only takes like two minutes.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Okay, moving on. Honorable mentions. Go to Mark Barone and Michael Hughes for assistance with the town hall elevator. Jill Stunt here and Lori Roundy for assistance retrieving data from the concessions surveillance system. And Bruce Maureen Duchene for making repairs to the concession stand door after it was vandalized. We are now at public comments, and I don't see public here. So I think we're gonna move on. Um, to the town hall heating and cooling update. Review the revised RFP for heat pumps, and then winter heating oil will be...
Yep, they're in your, they're in your packet, the revised RFP.
Oh, wonderful.
In front of you is, uh, Bill Lawson's, you got that, too, right?
Yes.
Bill Lawson's estimate.
Right. Yep. I looked at that. So, great, let's go ahead. And, um, this is the revised heat pump RFP, since we received no bids on our first one. People wanna take a look at that?
Unfortunately, I got two questions.
Unfortunately, it's only two.
Unfortunately, one is, and I think I know the answer, because Bill did the same thing. We need two heat pumps to cover all of the all of the condenser styles, I think, and that's the, the heads down here. We're gonna put in six heads.
Two compressors for the six heads on the first floor.
Okay, all right. That's, I just wanted to make sure, because I was reading it, I'm like, I, I don't, I don't know how necessary the two in the hall are. I know they'd be great for the winter. Summertime, not really a necessity. So, and if you could eliminate those two, you could get out of one, I guess. I don't, maybe not.
I'm not sure, because he has the front hall and...
He has the front hall and the back hall.
Well, he has, he has all the same twenty in the back, and, right, so I'm not sure.
Okay. I mean, it's, you know...
In terms of running lines and stuff like that, whether or not that...
Well, it's the size, size of the condenser outside.
But isn't there, there's also a limit of how far the lines can go before they lose efficacy? I remember that was in my house when I was looking at it. It was like, yeah, maybe that's also just a residential level, but that, it can't go too, too far. It only has like 100 feet or something like that.
Well, they're all gonna go the same distance, even on the other compressor. Uh, I think it's, it's, it's the size of the compressors that are available. I think that Dayton's only have a four-head max.
Okay.
I think, so, and that may be why, but that was one question. The other thing is, I noticed in Bill's proposal, I wanted to make sure it was in this one, is we had discussed not putting the heat pumps or the compressors on the wall. Bill was mounting that, that back, and I think we had discussed not doing that.
Not mounting?
Not mounting that to the building.
Okay.
Because of historical...
Because of historical, the higher repair. And that's literally, other than how I, you know, looking at Bill's proposal.
The original RFP talked about a concrete pad.
Yeah, and they don't have to be a concrete pad. I mean, it stands that, that billies are designed for those. They sit on the ground.
Okay.
And they're adjustable legs on them. I think he puts little small pads.
Get that out of the RFP and...
Well, I was looking at the RFP. I'm not sure if it's actually...
Is it in the RFP?
I don't think it so much says it in the RFP, but it does say it.
In bills?
In bills.
Okay.
I don't think it specifies in the, I didn't see it where it specified in the RFP. But that, that was my only concern and fight back. It was just, we had talked about not putting it on the wall.
Right, yep.
And that was kind of way back.
So in the, in the revised RFP, it says units located in the rear of the building or detached on the side of the building.
But it's in the rear, so it gets specified one way or the other.
Right.
That was based on the historical comments.
Yes. So I'm not sure if, um...
Like I said, it doesn't say it in the, I don't think, I'd like to get, but that's the only thing that I saw with Bill's proposal and that he was gonna mount it on the wall.
Right, we can't have that.
Because originally, they were talking about putting it up here.
Right, they were...
And we said, yeah, we're not doing that, and put it out back, but again, still don't want to put it on the wall out there.
Yeah, we could clarify with that, because I thought they wanted it either detached out here or in the back. I don't know if they specified they couldn't be detached, attached in the back, because there's so much out there already. I don't think attached in the back. That was my impression? I didn't think it...
Well, we were putting up, and I think originally, we were gonna put them under the stairs.
Yeah.
On, on, on over pad of some sort, and like you said, I know the way, the ones that Bill sell have, you know, adjustable legs, but just, he put a little concrete blocks under all four corners.
Looking at this, I cannot see that the RFP mentions anything about them having to be attached.
And that's just, that should be just a footnote when they kind of, if anybody bids on it, that was a bill.
Who, who was, who...
Yeah.
Oh, you see this?
Is this the, the new one? Which way, what are you looking at? The new RFP?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I modified the prior one based on the comments that you guys had.
The engineer didn't do it, you did it.
No.
Yeah, the, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he modified it according to what we said last time, and Mark gave him all that information last time.
The engineer did not have input to the heat pump RFP. The engineer never had input to the heat pump RFP.
I see.
No, he had just the boilers and the...
He missed a lot of input, I think.
Okay, so, do we need a motion on this?
Yeah, if you're going to go ahead with this, or, I mean, I don't know how...
I guess maybe, maybe just a couple of quick notes going after this. So one thing I noticed that, and this was my error, and I mentioned it to Sandy later, hope somebody could talk about it first. If you do decide to repost this new RFP, under the period of performance, I forgot to adjust the end date.
Oh.
So it still reflects November 31st as opposed to March for the second floor. So the second floor, we call this optional.
Right.
And I think that for the period of performance, you probably want to cover that entire period, which would be the, which would be the end of that.
Okay.
And then as a follow-up to...
So you're gonna fix that?
Oh, yeah, we can, if you wanna, if you decide to post this, then we could, we could, we could want to make that adjustment out of things. And then for just a clarification on Bill, so when I read through Bill's, the first question that I had, um, related to the electric.
Yes.
So he mentioned in there that the electric would be performed by others, so he's, when I asked him about that, he said that he can't pull a permit for a commercial building, so that's why he had the electric brought up by others. So in terms of the electric, to answer that question, the next step would be to give those, the specs of the equipment that Bill provided to Robbie, and then he would do the load count based on the existing things in the building plus the new proposed equipment, to determine is there enough capacity on the existing single-phase service in the town hall currently? If there is, then it's obviously, it's minimal electrical work that's required. If there's not, then it would be a requirement, we'd have to pull the single phase out. We can go back to the production committee, confirm, yeah, we are, it's official, we need to tap into this. We would have to pull a single-phase line out of the three-phase siren circuit, and there'd be a panel involved with that. So that's just a, because right now, it's an open question based on Bill's as to what's the electrical cost. If you recall from the, from the initial estimates, Robbie had put in $7,000 in electrical.
Yeah.
That was based on electrical for both the first floor and the second floor. Not including a, a new service, which we decided we don't need anyway. The new service was like $25,000. So anyway, that's the one piece of clarification from Bill's. The other piece was I didn't see a date on there. So I just reached out to him and asked him, you know, would you be able to do this in the timeframe of the original RFP, which was 90 days from August 5th, so which would be November 5th? He got back to me and said, yes, we can do it by then.
Okay.
So, that, that's good news.
So do we just need that written down?
We would probably, if you decide to take his bid, you would wanna have a date for that.
If we decide, right.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
So, sure, he'll do it in the timeframe he says, but it makes sense to have it right now.
Sandy, why do we have automobile liability insurance listed in here as a...
This is in the RFP?
I mean, yeah. Is there, is there a reason?
Yeah, it does.
General liability, all that stuff, why are we asking for vehicle insurance?
That's on them, right?
It's just, it's everything that VLCT has asked us to put in all our, all our contracts.
All right, I'm good.
We put those in everything. All of these, everything after like evaluation, terms and conditions, partnerships, non-discrimination, those are all...
Yeah, right, but I'm just, I'm looking at automobile liability insurance. Not sure the town's concerned. They get an accident on the way, it's not...
Well, I mean, I think sometimes it's parking gear, or things like that.
Right, before they slam into the building, you want to make sure that they have automobile insurance. Right, or it hits somebody else's car.
Once they're on the job, the general liability takes in, right? I mean, it's no big deal, I would just, I'm just... I'd like to make a motion if you send this through with a couple of, no caveats.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor of accepting the RFP with the adjustments that Mark mentioned?
Aye.
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 The RFP goes through?
You know, should we reach out to Bill and just make sure he can, if there's any change in price from maybe mounting on the wall or putting it on a stand, I don't think it probably changes what on the stand.
So, just so I understand, so how's that working? So, you're not accepting Bill's bid, you're reposting the RFP, and you're just counting on Bill saying that his bid still holds until the end of the RFP?
We just ask, yeah.
Yeah.
We got, I mean, we got his bid, we, you know, we kind of have to...
It wasn't a sealed bid, it was just a proposal with a number on it. And that's good information for us, but it's not, the sealed bid, it's not processed, so September 16th, we'll hopefully open that.
I mean, he literally, if he takes this,
Yes.
puts it in the envelope and sends it to us.
Yeah.
And puts in the modifications that we requested in the new sealed one. This is the proposal, and then all the things we just discussed here can then be added with the new and improved.
So then we, we just need to make sure that he knows to resubmit this after the RFP goes live?
Yes.
Just to make sure he knows that we're not, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. That he can do it. He can do it basically, just, yeah.
If he's it, he's it.
Yeah.
You know, now that we've got it, now to...
Right.
I guess my only concern is that, you know, the way things go, right? They're constantly booking new work, so...
Yeah.
I think that's just a...
There is a bit of a risk, but...
But I think it's one we've gotta do, so...
It's not like the bid was in the original period of the first RFP.
Right.
Like if we, yeah, if we're making modifications to the RFP that he had submitted during, that proposal during that time, then yeah, we could do it, but, right.
Right.
Okay, so just want to clear the, the changes that we're asking for him. Are we asking him to put it on pads in the back rather than...
Rather than mounting it to the wall?
Okay, so that's, that we should probably reflect in the RFP then, rather than just mention it to him? So, so we're gonna...
So we'll need some sort of line in the RFP then?
Yeah, the condensers need to be mounted on the ground, cannot be mounted on the building, that's all.
Due to historical preservation.
Although, it's my understanding that was not with historical preservation, so I wasn't in that call.
They prefer to have it out there on the ground, but it wasn't necessary. Our concern is, it's an old building. We start drilling holes in it again and loosen up, call out.
Then we could, we could give repercussions to give that.
And then the, the period of performance, you'd like me to switch that to from November 30th to March 31st?
Yes, to the second floor.
For the second floor.
For the second floor, yeah. Well, yeah, so the period of performance doesn't call it out. It's, the dates are called out individually, but I guess we could, we could call out both in the period of performance.
I mean, because it's in the time, it's in the timeframe. If, earlier in the, in the schedule, under schedule, it says first floor, November 30th, second floor, March 31st, just down in the period of performance, so we could just duplicate the, or take it out altogether, period of performance.
All right.
Yeah.
And then what was the other one? Is there another one for Bill?
Um, let's see.
Well, the, I guess the date doesn't matter now, because it's, the date's gonna default to him.
Right, but it's...
So he said he could do it by November 5th, now it's gonna be November 31st.
It was also including the electrical? Because that's not included on here, if we know what...
Well, we now have his specs.
So if that's not the RFP, never mind. That was in Bill's.
Yeah, so I don't know what the other situation with other plumbing heating...
And we don't have, we don't have to worry about that. Yeah, I'm sorry, I was mixing my two subjects.
But you will reach out to electrician to...
Yeah.
Because we know, we know what Bill's proposal is.
Yeah.
So we pretty much know what, even, even if we go with another manufacturer, loads are still supposed to be the same.
Right. Yep.
I added a thirty amp breaker for four heads, so, I mean, that's not...
Right.
Thirty amp, two twenty, so, a subtail maybe, but I don't, we won't draw that much. Just keep it driving sixty amps. Hope this is, maxed out.
Yeah. So we won't have the, it's very, highly unlikely that Robbie will be able to do the load count by tomorrow.
Right.
So we'll, we'll submit the RFP with the change that we've talked about. In parallel, he can do the load count based on the equipment that Bill put together and he's just...
Because the eyes will find, uh, the plumbing and heating person, if we find anybody at all, are gonna be able to do the electric on commercial buildings, so. And that's gonna be separate anyways, more than one.
More likely.
Okay.
Bye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Tom, for your...
How was that?
Finally?
Yeah. Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Moving on. Um, so now, town get heating oil quotes or see if Champlain fuel will continue at the same rate?
I mean, usually this is the time of year I'm going out and getting heating oil quotes, and I just didn't know, maybe the best option would just be if Champlain would just extend the rate that they...
It's the same rate.
Yeah.
Is it?
And it's not contracted so many gallons, it's just as heated.
I mean, we, when we go out to quote bid for them, originally we say this is just generally what we use each year, but then maybe this year it's just, can you extend the rate through the season and see what they say.
Do we need a motion for that?
No, we can do it by consensus.
So what does everybody think?
Yeah.
Just by continuing with Champlain?
Yes.
Yeah, totally.
Are we good with continuing with Champlain?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll flex the gas.
I think we've got it with Champlain for the same rate, so if we're, got consensus?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Okay, so now we are moving on to flag football. Eric McKee took over the flag football last year. Um, Shannon Pitlick has said that she'd be happy to work with Eric to run the program through the recreation committee. Um, this means that the town's insurance would provide coverage at no additional cost. Um, he would need to collect waivers and provide coffees to the town. Um, do we approve running flag football under ESEREC program? I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Shannon, what do you think?
Sounds good. And they will, incredible job, Dallas.
Yep, they do.
Okay, so we approve.
Good.
Okay, we are on to zoning question on November ballot. Julie's received clarification from the Secretary of State's office regarding the proposed zoning question on November ballot. The state needs the town's approval to add that question to the ballot. The state mails out to all Wallingford Register voters. It will cost the town nothing, and all voters will receive ballots. If you want the, to grant the state permission to include the zoning question on November ballot, we will need a motion, a second, and a vote.
Hmm.
So...
Sounds like, sounds like a good idea.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
So that would be instead of doing it in March, or a time, you know, we were always gonna do it in November.
We were always gonna do it in November.
Yes.
But we were, we thought originally we had to mail out separate ballots, but the state will include it on their ballot.
It'll include it on their ballot.
Uh, I will make, yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to allow the state to put it onto the one ballot if we do not have anything.
Yeah.
Wait a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Before we leave zoning...
So that the vote...
You just, you just...
Well, I got an interesting thing in the mail the other day that tells me to leash my dogs until after my house is being reappraised.
Yes.
Uh, I didn't, I thought reappraisal was starting next year, not this year. I'm just, maybe I missed something.
No, it's starting this summer.
Yes.
It's gonna, it's gonna, it's a two-year thing.
They're gonna, that was my concern. I mean, not a real nice way of putting it, that we're coming out, leash your dogs. I don't know when they're gonna come, but the dogs are out, I can't...
He's gonna get, he's gonna contact you two weeks before.
You'll get a notice two weeks before he arrives.
Okay.
And the, the request is that during that period that people leash their dogs after you get that notice. You'll get a notice first saying that in the next two weeks, reappraisal will be out to appraise the property.
All right, we, we do have a number, so we can, we'll call it just request.
That's the other day, you could send, uh, they'll send you a postcard that they're gonna be in there in two weeks. You can call back and schedule an appointment, so you know exactly when he's gonna be there.
Yeah.
So yours wasn't even like the notification that you're coming, just that, in general?
In general, at least, I'm like, oh, it's on wait for how long, right, this summer?
Yeah, I wonder also if we make sure that like, if that's the, actually the notification letter, that it actually specifies...
I had dogs, I didn't get a notice.
Um, so...
Was it a postcard?
It was, yeah.
It was a yellow, kind of a...
It was in with the, um, property tax. I, I think I've got mine, yeah.
It was, yeah.
It was in with the property tax and explained, yes. It explained what the...
I just saw the postcard.
There was a dirt piece of paper, it's a pink piece of paper, and it's in with the property tax bill.
Okay.
You're not supposed to throw it all away.
And, and it explained...
Yes, exactly, because last year it didn't.
It explains that the process is coming, when the process is gonna be, and that you will be receiving when, when it's time for you to get your reappraisal. You get a card saying in the next two weeks.
Yes, so that was...
It must be appraised, and your request is that dogs, if you have dogs, that they are leashed during that period, and that you can make an appointment if you'd rather do that.
Okay. So then that's what you found, Mark? It was, it was inside of the thing?
And it was all in the...
It was in, yeah, it was in, just a piece of paper.
I just wanted to make sure when you thought it was getting sent out to be not saying, oh, it's gonna be within two weeks.
I didn't know about my tax bill, so it could have been in there too.
Yeah, so, I guess, so it was, it was the tax bill, and it explained all the information.
It said, like I said, it was just, I'm like, I'm gonna leash my dogs for the rest of summer, I don't know when they're coming or...
For next year.
No, I...
For next year, right.
I read it pretty carefully, and it said, you receive a card, in the next two weeks you're gonna be reappraised during that timeframe, because then they want you to leash dogs. So if you'd rather make an appointment, you can. And it was all in the notice, which I think only Mark and I were. Okay.
I didn't read very well.
He didn't remember, he misses that so.
Okay.
Oh, I'm a way back when I threw the, uh, the property tax bill in there.
Okay. So moving on to town hall painting. Kevin...
So, uh, Tom Fort went out and checked everything. He found those few items. Kevin has come back and corrected everything except caulking the bottom of the doors. He said you wouldn't even be able to open the doors if they caulked on the bottom, so.
Oh.
But he fixed everything else.
Okay.
So what was wrong with the bottom of the doors? I didn't hear that part.
He, um, Tom thought they should be caulked on the sides of the exterior.
Okay.
Uh, but Kevin said if you do that, then you know, they won't be able to...
You wouldn't be able to shut the door if you do that.
He said not to do that. But he came back and he did the caulking here and the trim on the window, and he painted the exterior door, so he did through, oh, everything else.
Okay.
And like within twenty-four hours.
Oh, that's great.
Very good. He's very good.
Excellent. Okay. Okay. Great, so everything's been addressed, so you're good to go?
Yes.
Um, moving on to meeting dates in September. The first meeting in September falls on Labor Day. Do you want to move the meeting to Tuesday, September third? Um, I don't know how anybody else feels. I'm fine, um, meeting on Labor Day because it's in the evening, and I know I will be back.
Well, well, maybe Sandy.
I'm not sure.
You're not sure that you're gonna be okay?
I won't be here.
Oh, okay. So do we want to move to...
The very next day, Tuesday.
The Tuesday, September third?
Yep.
Okay.
So that reminded, because I was to give the...
Yeah, yeah.
Just that we do have a cross country, I think, for...
We have it be on...
Put it on your phone.
The third.
Oh, well, I put something else on the third bed, so, yeah. We'll have to see, yes.
That's why.
One of us will have to short...
That's why it's short, but...
I tried because I have something on the third bed. Well, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Moving on.
The, the meeting after that's the sixteenth, right?
Yeah.
Yes, we'll be sixteen.
Yep.
And those are our September meetings, September sixteenth.
Okay. So now, select board comments and concerns. Do we have any select board comments and concerns that haven't been addressed or...
I don't know.
Okay. Okay, hearing none. Let's see. During the August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four primary vote, a hundred ninety-five votes were cast. Okay. The down, so we saw about the other attempted...
Any more progress on that, or any more?
They identified one of the two for sure, and the most they get charged with is unlawful trespass.
Because they didn't get in?
I would prosecute it anyways.
What?
I would, I would go after unlawful trespass.
Yes, definitely.
Just because.
I don't know why it can't be malicious mischief or something.
Right. Yeah. Okay.
Destruction of private property or...
Yes.
Well, it's public property.
And no, uh... To what I want to say, no, um, working it off. In other words, like we did the other kids.
No.
Not, not this time.
Well, just because it's been multiple times, we suspect that they might have been doing it multiple times and...
Yeah, I don't think...
And, yeah, and a couple things you told me about it, yeah.
Right, I don't think, they deserve, uh...
No.
That they didn't accept it either. Um, they did have, I was telling Carolyn, we did have, and Mark knows, the, two of the bathrooms overflowed Friday.
Yes.
By the fact that we had a portable restroom over there.
So do we need to talk about...
Yeah, I, uh, Hubbard's picked up their portable restroom today, and I asked Nancy Hubbard about getting the tank...
Yes.
Tank pumped, and I talked to Phil about it today. Um, it might be a good idea to have Hubbard's pump the tank, and then see, get Tracy's, Hubbard's opinion.
Okay.
Something he can't tackle, then we can call an A1, but...
Okay.
It's expensive, so that might be nice to start with Hubbard's.
So see about Hubbard's...
The pumps, the tank should be pumped either way.
And then they can assess?
Yeah. If it's something that they can't handle, then we can call somebody else in, but maybe...
So it's not a septic field? It's a, just a tank?
Well, it's a tank with a leak field.
Right, yeah.
The leak field's like a one bathroom or two bathrooms. And when you have that many kids going through it...
Right.
Right.
You know, two-month period, a one-month period.
Yeah, that's a difference.
And it abuses it. But we also could, it's been it for a long time, so it could have trees in the, the leak field.
Or something.
Yeah.
So you're just by consensus, yes.
Or even blocking the thing.
Yeah. So how do people feel? Are we, do we approve having it pumped and then Tracy Hubbard assess?
Yeah, let's get it pumped and start there. So we got a clean start in spring.
Right.
Okay.
Like even if they put one of those, um, cameras through there, have that sense, is that...
Yeah, how do Hubbard's have one, yeah.
No, like...
A1, right.
Yeah.
It'd be nice if...
The, um, the beach closed on August fifteenth. Um, we're gonna wait on the boarding up because there's...
Because they're trying to work on, Shannon's working on a grant.
Contractor's estimate, yes.
Yes, to do, to maybe remodel the whole building, so they want to get, um, some, a contractor in there for estimate, so we'll hold off on boarding it up.
And now some updates from the recreation committee. There's some events coming up. Um, there will be an outdoor movie, the Goonies, on August twenty-third. Um, this is part of a flood community grant. Um, there will be, um, popcorn and candy, um, glow sticks for kids, um, and there may be, there may be a field game before. There's gonna be a community breakfast on October twenty-sixth, and the mural on the rec shed, um, will be going up created by Macy Smith. And I think...
That's it?
That's it. I will entertain a motion.
A mo, I want a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Meeting is adjourned.